Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of May 27, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Francio, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, united as one with the great and just as one.
All right, announcements and committee reports. I only have one announcement, and I think it's good news because I've been passing along from the county about the status of the Guimist Ferry. And the date hasn't changed this time. So the estimate, best estimate to return to full service is June 6. The vote is underway doing tests, but they anticipate it's Friday, June 6 for full service. Walk-on service continues, but that's the same date they reported last, last week. So I think that's positive. All right, council announcements, committee reports. First up, fiber committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The fiber committee met last week. Mostly same old, same old. A couple of notes. I think we've mentioned before that Summit X, which is doing the excavation work for the Department of Commerce EDA grant area that we have, has completed about eighty-two percent of that project, and they are now transitioning to our separate waterline project. They'll resume the fiber project work in approximately four months and complete that work by the end of 2025. The installations, the connections between the backbone and your premises in that area, that EDA grant area are scheduled to begin the first week of June. So coming right up here. And so that's pretty exciting because that area is a area where a lot of people have been waiting for a long time. Also notable, it was, I think, would have been two weeks ago now that we had some scheduled downtime to fix an issue with our router. That was a longstanding issue that required some extensive diagnosis from the router vendor Nokia. And that, that downtime went well. The router issue was resolved. And it was all hap, it all happened during the middle of the night and allowed us to test our mass notification system. And notably, our, our mass notification system, which sends out text messages and voicemails, has difficulty pronouncing Anacortes. But we're working on it. We're working on it. And maybe, do you have an update?
I went in today and actually looked in the backside, and we have trained it properly in how to, to say Anacortes. So I'm not quite sure what else I can do at this point.
Okay, so maybe, maybe that'll be better in the future, but it's close enough that you can figure it out if you get the voicemail. I think, other than that, nothing notable to report from that, from that committee meeting.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate the public's support. As we continue to grow the fiber system, there are opportunities that we have to take it down. So I think that all worked well from the consumer, and there is a number, a couple of consumers on the dais that are very excited about the EDA area being plugged in. Any questions for fiber? Next is finance committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. The finance committee met on May 22nd. It included council member Moulton and McDougal and myself. We also had finance manager Rhonda Peck and director Steve Hoagland there. It was a remote meeting. We started out by talking, discussing the fact that we're, one of our key longtime employees in the finance department will be retiring soon. And his planning has, has let us know that he's plans to retire in July. So we discussed somewhat about how to shift responsibilities and what that's going to look like for the department moving forward. One of the big things is the fact that he has, that, that position does a lot of different things. And it's done a lot of things for a long time without always having it written down on a, on a flow chart. But also, it's the fact that we're going to start implementing the Enterprise Resource Planning Software, which is on the agenda later today. So there's a lot of work still to be done in the finance department. The annual report for the Gatsby report is due, or there, no, there's two new Gasbys to report on. And the annual audit report is due, I believe, at the end of this week. So they are, the department's working quite, they're quite focused on completing that annual report. And then we've kind of finished up talking about somewhat about our retreat coming up when it comes to finance and what that would look like. Some of the concerns that the committee would like to see moving forward. I think it's all things that have been brought up in the past at the dais, at council meetings. But making sure that we've got real numbers and to work with so that we can have fruitful conversations about things. And looking also, staff is doing some work about potential new revenue streams that they see from a staff perspective that might be worth a discussion at that retreat for full council. And I believe that is it.
Any questions for finance? Next up, planning committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The planning committee met at 5:00 PM, and it was council members Cleland McGrath, Walters, and myself, and planning director John Coleman, and Libby Grage. I want to call her the master planner, but I don't believe that's her title. But she does a lot, and one of the things that she's working very hard on and has been for months is the comp plan update. And we will be having a check-in at council for us and the public on June 9. And it will be an overview of the nine elements of the comp plan and kind of a high-level look at those, at, at those and what's generally happening there before we get the draft. But there will be a lot of information in our council packet that corresponds with that, so get ready. We talked also about the city's hired geoengineers to do best available science review, and that is related to our critical areas ordinance. And because science changes over time and best available practices change, they are reviewing our critical areas ordinance. We don't expect there to be very large changes, but this is just part of a process that we need to go through. And the consultant will present to the planning commission, probably not for another six weeks or so. And then that, those will also, any updates will come to city council as well. Planning director Coleman has applied for County Point 09 funding. He has an application in for $750,000 for the joint project with the port to build the event center. And this is for economic development and jobs created and general economic health of the city. So this money, should we qualify for it, would go toward the construction costs of the event center. So that would be wonderful. And we talked a little bit about ADUs, and there's been a request for some sort of off-the-shelf plans. And Mr. Coleman did a really deep dive into that, talking to cities who've done that, like Renton in Seattle. So someone could just come and get plans from us. It turns out it takes an incalculable amount of staff time, according to people in other jurisdictions. And also, it's very expensive. I think Renton spent $85,000 on their plans. And then they have to up, they constantly needed, need to be updated based on changes in, in, in energy regulations and things that come down from the state. So it's not a static thing that you can just buy and have and then sell. So it's, it's not really practical for us. It's, doesn't, doesn't look like, it sounds like a great idea, but it doesn't turn out to really be a super functional, good idea in reality. And that's it.
All right. Questions for planning committee?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, just, I, I would love to hear more about the look into seeing, you know, if it would work. I, I heard what you said, and so I think what you were telling us is that after the investigation, the idea that one model could fit, there are requirements that can vary from thing to thing to thing. And I think that the reason part of that was pushed forward is simply to help with greater efficiencies about the ADUs. And so what you're saying is, in the investigation, you found that it wasn't efficient, that the updates were different, and also that the person that spent money for it, you know, spent a lot of money and they may not want to share it. So I would love to hear a little bit more about that, and this may not be the platform to do that. But yeah, I'm curious about that, because I thought it was a great idea, too.
Sure, I'll just quickly address that. One of the points was that in Seattle, very few people have taken advantage of those plans. It's a very small percentage. So when looking at the amount of staff time, the amount of work, the amount of money, and the changing regulations that need to be updated, it just doesn't, it just, it just hasn't been a fruitful exercise for, for these cities. And I'm sure Mr. Coleman would be happy to talk to you about that in more detail, because he really did do a deep dive into that. You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
Mr. Walters.
And Mr. Coleman also indicated he would brief the Economic Development Committee about that, too. Because it's actually, because I think our meeting was in between, but it was actually the Economic Development Committee that came up with the request, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, museum committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. Museum committee met last week. It was council member McDougal and myself and Mr. Lunsford give a quick overview of some of the fun things that are happening around town. The museum is partnering with Island Adventures to put together a historical cruise. There are three of them happening over the summer. They're about three hours long. They leave at 5:00. $59 plus taxes and fees, limited to 100 in tickets. The June 6 event is already sold out, which is fantastic. August 22 is selling now, and September 5 is another opportunity. So it's something that they're, like I said, they're partnering with Island Adventures. So Island Adventures is actually selling the tickets directly on their website. We also were given an update on the Quilichitl Park. There is a grant process that the museum has been leading on in order to get interpretive science. The grant has now been passed on to parks, since it's something that parks is managing. But they're looking at ways to spruce up the little park, maybe putting sculptures in, very interesting interpretive panels, maybe a viewing platform, so coming up with ideas and some drawings for that. Museum is also still working with the architect for the storage building that is getting built, coming up with different designs to try to figure out whether or not it needs to look, if they, if they want it to look more like a house or if they want it to kind of mirror the design of the historic Carnegie Library. A quick thing to note, an important thing to note, no existing parking will actually be lost when that building goes up. And then the staff out at the museum are also doing a lot of work on an upcoming music exhibit, and they are looking for actual stuff. So if folks have posters or records, cassettes, vinyls, eight tracks, maybe anything like that from Anacortes folks, get in touch with Mr. Lunsford. They are looking for donations. They're also looking for any sort of like audiovisual stuff. They have the ability to rip your VHS. Not sure about Betamax, but it's, music scene in Anacortes has been happening for a while. It's been pretty hip. It's really interesting, too. We learned that there are a lot of city staff members who may have been in bands during their lifetime here in Anacortes. So if anybody needs to send their kids on like a fun little scavenger hunt, maybe, well, maybe not call, but look around online and find out what staff member has been in what punk band and just put together a little bingo sheet or something. So lots of, lots of really, really cool stuff happening in town, and it's always nice to get our quarterly update from the museum.
Any questions? Any other announcements or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, myself along with council member Moulton, on Memorial Day, attended the empty chair ceremony that was put on by the Fidalgo Masonic Lodge. It was a very moving ceremony. It was great. We actually spoke a little bit about our grandfathers and our, our experience, not direct experience, but experience with the armed forces. Also, council, council member Moulton and myself, not together, although it seems like we spent the whole weekend together, we attended the senior center unconventional runway show, which was quite amazing and packed and a raucous event. I have never seen so many seniors get so wild, but it was, it was quite, quite an event. And the last thing that I just quickly wanted to mention is I did ask for a letter. I just want to make sure everybody received the letter that I put forward. So over the past years, a year and a half that I've been on council, I've had a lot of really good conversations with folks around town, whether it's a grocery store, out walking my dog. And one thing that kind of keeps coming up is that residents feel like there's a lot of decisions that are being made behind, in committees. Now, obviously, we know decisions don't, aren't made at the committee level, but the perception can sometimes be that way. And I want to be really clear that it's not that anybody is doing anything wrong. In fact, I think that the seven council members that are up here right now are very hardworking, dedicated, civil servants. But perception does matter, and when people don't see the full council debating issues publicly, sometimes it can create doubt. So the letter that I put forward is proposing at our retreat that we have a very robust discussion about potentially transitioning to a committee of the whole system. I'll, I'll spare you the details of the entire letter, but I do hope that we have the opportunity. Sounds like from our mediator that there is some plan to discuss some of our council procedures at the upcoming retreat. So I look forward to that, and if anybody would like to chat before then, where we're allowed, without OPMA violations, I'd be, be happy to.
Thank you. And yeah, I appreciate all the council participating with our facilitator for the retreat. Marilyn is coming again, again, this year, and we've, I think we've got every, all of council concerns in there, and we'll have an agenda for you all very soon. All right. Any other announcements or committee reports may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Since you brought it up, Mr. Fantini, at least there's four points and a couple of the topics we have discussed at a committee level, a personnel, that's Mr. Young, yourself, and me, which is fine. But I'm kind of curious, this is the first indication I've heard about small committees moving to a committee of the whole structure. Not something we've ever discussed in committee level, not something we've ever suggested at this level. It seems like current committee practice is that we have two to three people, or three people have to put something up on an agenda item. Are you suggesting that as an individual, you want this to be added as an agenda item to the retreat for the public so that they have transparency? We each, and this is how, what's happened, I think, for a number of years, at least with Mr., with Mayor Miller, is that we have a facilitator. That facilitator meets with every council member individually for approximately 45 minutes. We individually get to talk about our concerns, goals, whatnot, for a retreat. And then that person, the facilitator, collects, gathers it all, talks to the mayor and staff to come up with an agenda. So I guess I'm curious as to why this concern raised to the level that it had to be a public letter when we've all had equal opportunity to discuss the agenda, and if you could expand on that.
Sure.
Mr. Francio.
So honestly, being new, this is really the only way that I knew to be able to speak to all council members together about some ideas that, that I had thought about. I think that when I spoke with the, is it mediator? Is that what we want to refer to?
Facilitator.
Facilitator, thank you. When I spoke with the facilitator, I kind of threw a couple of these out there to her, and she had mentioned that there were other council members that had expressed a desire in revisiting council procedures as well. And I felt so, in order to save us all time at the retreat, and so that all council members could know what my thoughts were and where I would be coming from, I'm not really, as far as I know, I can't just send an email to all council members without it being a publicly disclosed letter, because that would be an OPMA violation. So the reason that I sent it to all council members and then asked it to be included in the, in the packet was so that it was not an OPMA violation.
All right. Other announcements, committee reports? All right. Next up is public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council? I didn't have anybody sign up, but I did see somebody come in a little bit late. So yeah, I'm savvy enough to figure out that you're probably coming, come on up, yep. Pub, public comment. So you just have to state your name for the record and the city that you live in, and come over to the, to that, that podium there. There's a button below the microphone. Make sure that comes on, and we'll give you, and we'll, and we'll give you three minutes after you state your name and where you live.
Okay, my name is Lori Carroll. I live on 38th Street in Anacortes for the last six years, since my mom passed away and left me her house with her husband, the widower, in it, who is now 87. And this is, on that note, my neighbor Jim Dunlap owned the Anchor Tavern. And then, anyway, he was a big name. He was my neighbor, big name in the community. Had an awesome red 62 Firebird that he'd stroll through the, run the gut, or whatever the thing is you do with cars. And my stepdad also owns a 65 midget sports car or something. So anyway, here's the deal. Jim was not in good condition physically for the last so many years. And we all kind of helped each other with car problems, yard problems, whatever. And he had a handyman guy living there that painted his house beautifully, 619 38th Street. You got to go by it, look at it. And anyway, he died and his daughter moved to Arizona. And the handyman, who was his daughter's friend, who did everything for Jim. And I'm my mom's daughter, and I do everything for my stepdad. And then I also have a handyman now that does everything for me, that cuts trees, mows the lawn. I'm now 63. It's hard for me to keep the yard up. As it was, Jim, who was older, veteran of what war? I don't know, Korean War? And, you know, just, so anyway, here's the deal. So I just got a letter in the mail today from the city, and it says, okay, so my handyman, who was a homeless guy who, four years ago, during the COVID, I found him, and we've been trading yard work for rent, let's say. And he's awesome, and he has other landlords around town that hire him when people move out. And boom, he goes in and does landscaping, painting, whatever. But, so my stepdad's grandson, this is real life, okay? Went through a divorce, didn't have anywhere to live with his two kids, asked if he could stay. So he brought in a $300 cool, ideal 1962 trailer. And, and then he got back with his wife and left and didn't take the trailer, which my stepdad bought for him for 300 bucks. But we're like, okay, we'll deal with it. Well, anyway, so here's the deal. So the homeless guy, he is known well by Robert, the barber, who has the food and clothing thing and showers in the back. He, this guy's known, a well-known person. So he bought that trailer for my stepdad and is moving it out. But it has some flat tires.
So you're at your three minutes, but I'll go ahead and let you, let the council know who the letter is.
So he's in process of doing that. Jim Dunlap's handyman guy had nowhere to go after they moved out. I sold him my truck and camper, and he is in process of getting that thing ready to roll and out of there to have a place to live. So I'm basically helping the city with their homeless population as well as they're helping us. But anyway, so I have a thing that says, discontinue all RV living that's not in accordance with the code AMC 19.48.020, which gives three weeks or nine weeks a year of staying, which I understand. I, it says I can request from the city council a special situation with an end date that they be removed so that I don't fall in violation or get fined. I would like that to be for, till the next city meeting. If I could have that extension with the understanding that they will be removed on that day.
Yeah, you'll submit it through, you can submit it through my office, the mayor's office, or through our code enforcement, which is Mr. Coleman's office. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get your request.
I just got it in the mail, and I looked it up and saw you guys had a meeting, so I did what I could.
Thank you. Appreciate it, yeah, but if you could get with.
Thanks for listening.
You bet. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wish to address the council? All right, on to our consent agenda, items 5A through D. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubig, second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item six. First item on other business is 6A. This is a contract award, Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services, discussion item, possible action. And I think the team, Mr. Hoagland and Ms. Peck. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. I, our finance manager Rhonda Peck has done a really nice job of running point on this project for the city. So before council considers action on the contract tonight, I asked Rhonda if she could put together a couple of speaking points and kind of, kind of go through the history of how we got there with this ERP system and the contract that's on the council agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. All right. Hello, council, hello, mayor.
All right, Ms. Peck, thank, welcome, and just make sure you got the microphone close enough for recording purposes. Thank you.
Guess I should have hit click a little sooner here. So as Mr. Hoagland stated, on your agenda tonight, you have the consideration with potential action to approve our contract for our upcoming ERP system that actually touches the entire city organization. So just a quick timeline for how did we get here? The city got notified by our current ERP manager, the Tyler Technologies, that our ERP system is being sunsetted, essentially no longer supported as of March of 2017, I'm sorry, 2027. So we did our RFP last year, early on in February. We got eight responses. We did do some consideration for those folks. From late June till mid-September, we had folks come in, do presentations, demonstrations for us. We did a lot of meetings internally to discuss some of the pros and cons of each option that we had to consider. We did come to a conclusion and made it our choice on who we wanted to go with in late December. We spent a few months negotiating with those folks to come here today to ask you to approve our contract. The contract, just quick summary.
Hold on just a second. Mr. Walters.
You go back one slide. It is a nice summary, except that it misses, I think, a critical component that differentiates this project from some of our other recent projects. And that is we hired a consultant to help develop the requirements for the RFP. Do you want to talk about that at all?
Of course. Yeah, so we did hire Enterprise Resource Software, who is known in the business as a very good company who knows a lot about the Tyler product in specific. So she did, her and a couple of her colleagues did go out and did the requirements gathering for us. They actually did the bid out to provide folks with consistent way of presenting. did the bid out to provide folks with consistent way of presenting to us consistent demos so that we were looking at everybody through the same view. So we did, we did acknowledge that we had some folks.
And did you develop a detailed list of requirements for the RFP? Spent a lot of time on business process analysis and that kind of thing?
We did. We did. And that touched quite a few of the different groups within the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. So the contract in front of you for consideration is just over $940,000. It's made up of two main components. One is implementation services for roughly $370,000. This will be one-time fees based on timing materials. And then we also have a component that is roughly $190,000 a year for three years, which is our software license. Then there is $180 if you wanted to put back to the total of the contract, which is for some third-party payment processing service fees to ensure that we are compliant in the Through the negotiation process and through some consultation from our colleagues that we hired to help us out, we were able to negotiate some savings from what we had initially been given as an estimate for the project. $350,000 essentially is what we were able to negotiate down. Part of that was on the software itself. Some of it is on the professional services, negotiated a little better rate. Payment processing, this one's going to be an interesting one for us. It's a big change for the city to go to a different processor. We were able to negotiate a little bit of savings there. And then by the nature of our project being delayed a little bit, just through some timing and some priorities, we've saved just this current year just over $80,000. So a little bit of help for our Just a quick review of the timeline. I know that you may have seen this before. This is a lengthy project. It's in three phases. First phase is all the financial aspects for the city. Phase two will be utility billing and then followed by phase three, which will be our human resources and payroll implementation. If we move forward tonight, we would start in July with our planning phase for finance. We would kick off our phase two, then six months later in January of 2026, followed by another six months for phase three being kicked off in July of next year. So staff does recommend that city council authorize the mayor to sign the contract 23-254-IDS-002 with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of $941,697 to provide Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services for the city of Anacortes.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. And I know the council's aware of it, but for the public that might be watching, this has been a very long process. A lot of staff hours put into this, a lot of working with the consultant. Every department touched, contributed to this, obviously with the finance and the lead. So I appreciate the work that staff put into this. So with that, council questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
How does the annual software as a service fee compare to the annual license fee that we pay now for Eden? Obviously, we're getting more through software as a service than what we are doing now with on-premises Eden, but how's it compare?
We currently only spend around $80,000 a year with Tyler.
Eighty?
Yeah.
Eight zero?
Eight zero.
Okay, and it's.
It's gonna be 190.
190. Okay. Does staff currently spend a lot of time on maintenance or support for the on-prem version that will be avoided as part of moving to software as a service? Or is that insignificant?
I think it'll be less. So yeah, our Jose and our IT organization, they do do some work for us on maintaining the software, maintaining the servers that it sits on. So yeah, we will save some time there. There'll still be a soft touch. We do still require their expertise when it comes to, you know, leading efforts for upgrades, just ensuring that our desktops are set up to support the software. So it'll be a lighter touch, but we will still need some support from them.
Okay. The reason I asked about the RFP process and the hiring the consultant to help develop the requirements is because this is sort of a mission-critical component of our software suite and we've had some recent issues with other software deployments. I'm thinking, say, OpenGov, where we didn't have the same approach. So I think that we stand a better chance of being successful here because of the approach that we took this time. What components are we getting as part of the software? So I saw on the screen there HR, but there's some discussion in the contract that I wasn't really quite able to tease out. What about records management or content management? Obviously, we already have Laserfish for records management. Is this going to play nicely with that? Or is it going to be supplemented or replaced?
So just a little bit of history before I give you an answer is our current ERP system, we do utilize an API interface that goes from our software to Laserfish for all of our document storage and retention. What'll happen in the future will be that we are going to utilize Tyler's content management tool for that immediate attachment and storage of the actual initial finance documents. However, those documents will then, through a nightly process, be fed to Laserfish. So Laserfish will continue to be our retention tool. We're not looking to make any changes at all to that.
Okay. Is there any downside to that? Is there any lack of functionality that we will experience from our current system?
So far, no. We will do a very careful, you know, process review at each step of it, just to make sure that we don't. But everything that we've looked at thus far, this actually does prove to be a benefit for the folks, especially in the finance and in the payroll space.
And looking at your timeline on your prior slide there, do I understand it correctly? It's a 36-month implementation? Those 12-month periods stack?
There's a six-month overlap, so it may actually end up being more close to 18 months to two years.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I see the dates there now. Will you be, you will presumably be running Eden at the same time?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Will that require additional staff time in maintaining two systems and potentially maintaining data in both systems at the same time?
There will be some overlap. So yeah, it will require a little bit of extra attention, a little bit of extra effort. As we roll onto a new module, we will work to quickly shut down the old one and just to, it'll be a rolling shutdown as we progress through the implementation timeline.
Okay. And then last question. I know that we've got more investments that we're making in our permitting software, which is not part of this implementation, but will we have connectivity between, what is the name of this new software?
This is, it's called Tyler EERP. They put an extra E in there. So it's called EERP.
So they could work on the name a little bit, I guess.
Basically, yeah.
So on the ERP software, will you have any connectivity with the permitting software in terms of billing or sending bills over to it or anything like that?
It'll be manual at this point in time. Currently, what we do in finance is we will log on and look for the permit fee that we're to collect the fees for. And we partner closely with John and his team to make sure that as we report and take the payments, that they're notified that we got them.
Okay. All right.
We will, we will look at potential interfaces as we get.
As a future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As we go further down the line.
I'm sure there's more questions.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just have, thanks for clarifying the timeline thing because when I was reading it, I was like, oh, no, 36 months in 2027. That's, ah, what are we gonna do? But that's great. I have a question about kind of like the post-project support. So like, once everything is implemented, we have all the deliverables across all the phases, they've been completed, accepted by the city. What kind of support will they give and how long does that last for? Like, is there gonna be enough?
So we feel that the current hours estimated in the contract will give us the support we need, both pre and post-implementation of the different phases. Tyler has a fairly robust, I'll call it a support group right now. A lot of those folks have moved over to support the new product as well. So there is the possibility we'll end up getting someone on a phone call that we've had before. But they do have a very robust online ticketing system that you can go submit requests to, you can call them. So we do feel good that their support module and their support services will be good enough for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Sorry, one more question. Apologies. I noticed that we have, or the city, has 10 days to accept a deliverable or reject a deliverable. Do we feel like that is going to be enough time to evaluate and get a satisfactory answer? Like, do you feel that's?
I do. I mean, we're gonna be doing so much of the work and it's gonna be so integrated in what we're doing and it benefits us, that I do feel like we'll know if we're ready to say it's good.
Great. Thank you.
Of course.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No. Thank you for, you know, the work put into or the due diligence to make sure that this is something that will really work for us in various departments to do the things that we needed to do. Oftentimes, when there are software programs that, you know, corporations use, you really don't know what you got until you really get in it. You know, one example, in my opinion, I thought I'd throw that in, would be, you know, hospitals. They pay $100 million for a program that sometimes they can't even extract out one number that they need out of it. I just find that ludicrous. And, you know, whereas a $1,500 laptop in an Excel spreadsheet can spit out what you want from it. So, you know, as a city of this size, our goal has been for one, efficiency. And as we expand and grow larger and more services, what I appreciate about what I believe we've done this time is, as you said, got with the consultant to identify what we wanted, what we needed, and now their valuation comes forward. So I'm looking forward to your review. I'm looking forward to figuring out where there might be holes and hopefully those holes can either plug or bridge. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Ms. Peck and Mr. Hoagland. A ton of work has gone into choosing this. And I think after our prior software troubles, that maybe it's, I mean, we got those out of the way, hopefully, and this with the consultant and the eight bids and the four deep dives and all the work you're doing. I think this sounds like it's, I'm hopeful, I'm very optimistic about this. And in the list I had emailed you earlier, and thank you for your response about the amount of city staff, there's a whole, it's like a battalion of how many city people are involved in the adoption and the implementation of this. And it touches all departments. It touches all of us, everyone who's going to use it. And so I really think that it's a great team working on it and you've done a good job to get us to this point. So thanks for all your work and the work ahead also.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Are we ready for a motion of sorts or anybody else want to add in? You're open to that?
I'm open to the motion.
I'm roughing him up, sorry. Unless there's any other discussion, I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 23-254-IDS-002 with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of $941,697 to provide Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubig to approve the contract as presented. Additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item and final item on the written agenda is item 6B. This is a contract award, public defense services contract. This is a discussion item, possible action. Ms. Hubig will be presenting.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the audience. Tonight, I'm pleased to present a contract with Periscope Legal. I thought that I would just provide some historical information, just as a reminder of how we've gotten here. Back in 2014, there was a change in the standards to the number of cases that indigenous defense attorneys could work through. And that was as a result of the Mount Vernon and Burlington versus Wilbur case. During that time, the city of Anacortes made the decision to move from having contracted services for public defense to bring an in-house public defender in. About a year ago, we presented the current public defender at the time, and myself, presented about upcoming changes to the public defense standards that the Washington State Bar Association had recommended. And we're still waiting on the Washington State Supreme Court to take action about whether to adopt those as recommended by the Washington State Bar Association or not. The public defender that was here ended up moving to a position that was closer to home in Watcom County. And our former public defender, Rob Jones, returned from retirement to assist us for just under six months, as is allowed through the Department of Retirement Systems. That allowed us some time to make some decisions about how best to move forward. And last week, I appreciate that we had, well, we had entered into an interlocal with the cities of Cedar Woolley, Mount Vernon, and Burlington to join together in our indigenous defense services and put out a request for proposals or qualifications. We were successful in that. There were a total of four respondents. And one of the respondents specifically indicated that they were only interested in serving the clients of the city of Anacortes. So last week, city council agreed to remove ourselves from that public defense services interlocal with the other cities. The other cities were supportive of that because that allowed them to then rework their different ratios about how things were going to be paid. And the city of Anacortes moved forward with preparing and working through the details of a contract with Periscope Legal. There's some things that I think that, from a financial standpoint, that you'll certainly be interested in. During the 2025 budget, there was an additional city attorney that was planned for beginning on July 1. So even with Periscope Legal moving to our public defense services, there is adequate money that has been set aside in 2025 for the costs that we have associated with our direct hires through the end of June and transitioning on June 9 to having contracted services for that. So basically, it's a transition from what we have budgeted for wages and personnel benefits is, will just be moved to professional services. But in total, it would be net, no need for any, net positive, no need for any type of budget amendment. This is a three-year contract that is before you. And we specifically built it so that there is, the reasons that we would come back and look at any kind of changes in the compensation package is if there was a change in the caseload over the last 18 months that is an increase or decrease of 15% or if the Washington State Supreme Court makes changes that also equates to more than a 15% change in what the caseload is. So I think that we've done a lot of work to try and think forward about how this contract will impact the city of Anacortes. There's some other cost savings by not having a direct staff member doing that in terms of we're not paying for the IT, we're not paying for communication costs, we're not paying for travel and training and those types of things. paying for travel and training and those types of things. Those are incorporated with the contract that is in place. So, I hope that that provides you an overview of the contract with what I think are the kind of key components from a financial standpoint, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Hue. Council questions? Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
This contract works out to somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars a year, and we had budgeted for 1.5 FTE for this year, but the 0.5 FTE was basically going to be a 1 FTE for half the year. So, with an anticipation that we'd do 2 FTE, I think, in 2026, right?
That's correct. So, it would have gone forward to be two public defenders plus a legal assistant. That would be in-house staff.
I had understood that we were budgeting for 2 FTE, well, 1.5 for 2025, but ultimately for 2 FTE plus legal assistant. Because we anticipated that the Supreme Court was going to change the caseload limits, that hasn't happened still. Assumedly, that's still coming, but we don't know what that's going to look like. So, here, though, we are contracting for a flat amount, and I don't find immediately in here a statement of how many cases we're currently processing. So, if the Supreme Court, say the Supreme Court changes the caseload limits in a significant way, and thus, we have a number of cases that increases, well, I guess your significance here is the actual number of offenses and cases that are processed, not related to the caseload limits. But still, shouldn't there be some tie here to the current number of cases that we are managing? And if the caseload limits haven't yet gone into effect, how do we know that we need the contract equivalent of that second FTE?
So, when the attorney was looking, the firm was looking at the request for qualifications, we had indicated what the caseload standards were for the prior year, and so they had information as they were building out their proposal or they're putting together the RFQ based on what the projected caseload or what the caseload was. And then also, as you've indicated, there is certainly an unknown about what the Washington State Supreme Court is going to decide in regard to the caseload standards. I do expect that we will continue to have professional services in place for conflict or overflow attorneys. Initially, there shouldn't be any kind of conflicts, but there may be overflow, so that would be a way that we could have, you know, the initial review if we needed to. I don't have that exact number, but it's somewhere right around 400 cases that are being handled in-house right now.
Okay. So, what I'm still having trouble with, though, is that this seems to be quite a bit more expensive than the 1 FTE that we were paying for before. And we anticipated we were going to need to go to 2 FTE, but we still don't know for sure if we need to go to 2 FTE. So, and the contract, even at this higher amount, includes these provisions for renegotiation if the caseload limit changes or if the number of actual cases changes. So, this seems like, even though it may fit within the budgeted amount, it is still quite a bit more expensive than what we have been dealing with.
Yes, and I hope that there was never any thought. I think I've been very clear, as I've been speaking with the council, that I don't think that there's any chance that our public defense costs are going to be going down. The firms that are responding to this are all aware of what the Washington State Bar Association has made in terms of recommendations, and are just, everybody's kind of waiting to see what the Washington State Supreme Court decides. So...
But I guess my point is, if the Supreme Court makes a decision that substantially reduces the allowed caseload limit, the 5B renegotiation due to change in the rule will be triggered immediately. I mean, if they were to make that decision next month, then we would immediately have to renegotiate this contract and negotiate the price upward. I mean, that will, that will be a significant burden, I would think.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that concludes my questions.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller?
All right. Ms. Moulton and then Mr. Fantini.
Thank you, Ms. Hue. So, the Supreme Court is going to rule on this at some point. It sounds like to me that around the state, I mean, this, what is being asked of communities to do is completely unrealistic as far as resources, number of public defenders in existence, and costs, when the state and the cities are under major financial burdens right now. So, I don't know if you can speak to this, but I don't see how that is, can realistically be forced on cities. I don't know if Ms. Wetnam has a thought on this. I mean, just because something's unrealistic, maybe a decision is made to make it happen, but it just seems insupportable to me.
Historically, the Washington State Supreme Court has concurred with the Washington State Bar Association. I think their silence is interesting. I mean, what the Washington State Bar Association has put forward basically would be a seventy percent reduction over a two-year period in terms of the number of cases that can be handled by a public defender, in addition to a weighting of cases that we're not currently doing. There was been a lot of concern. The Washington Supreme Court offered two different opportunities for public comment. The City of Anacortes did provide public comment about concerns about the reduced standards. One, in terms of, you know, impact from a financial standpoint for the city budget, and two, for the lack of available public defenders in the state, even coming through all of the law schools in the area that wouldn't be able to meet the needs of the requirements. So, I don't have any special insight to what the Washington Supreme Court is deciding, but I would have to think that those would likely be weighing on them.
So, I know, Mr. Fantini, you're up next, but I got to weigh in because I've been talking about this a lot with our legislative representatives, as well as, of course, as we go through these contracts and with other cities, as we, you know, we thought we were going to combine together and throwing out dates when I thought the Supreme Court was going to make a decision. But I think we all have come to the conclusion that the numbers are unrealistic, and what the reality is, we would not be able to provide the constitutionally required indigenous defense, so therefore, we would likely have to drop a number of cases. Ultimately, that's, so for me, as charged with enforcing the codes and ordinance of Anacortes, for me, that's what that means, is unable to ultimately enforce the law when it comes to not having enough public defenders. So, that's the bottom line. And another thing I think that council probably is aware, as Ms. Hue pointed out at the beginning, Mr. Jones, we thank him for coming and pinch hitting, but we are going to, he's going to have to leave soon, so we're going to be in that limbo area. And yes, to Mr. Walters' point, there is a cost delta that seems high without knowing that, without knowing that number, without knowing the caseload number. But I think it's kind of a good thing that we don't know the case number, but, because the number that we think it's going to be is a number that's not sustainable anywhere, not enough attorneys, not enough money. Mr. Fantini, sorry, I took your time.
Actually, thank you, because you clarified a little bit of, I had kind of lost the plot, for lack of a better term, on why it was so essential that if this, if this has not, if this change has not occurred yet, if they haven't said, yes, you have to take these new caseloads, why are we, why are we going through this exercise? But it sounds like we have somebody that's leaving, that's going to leave us with a completely, with nothing, essentially. Is that kind of...
That's correct. When the city made the decision to move forward with the interlocal with the other cities at that point, it was at a time when we had an interim person here helping us with our public defense services. The last day that he can be at the city is June 10th. We're tracking the number of hours that he is allowed to work. This contract would go into effect on June 9th, and so it provides for continuity of services. In addition, they're going to be responsible for all of our record retention, and our files that we currently have now will transition, and they will assume the record retention responsibilities for that. So, I feel like I understand and acknowledge that this is an expensive proposition, but I think that I'm concerned if we don't move forward with it for the impact to our current cases that we have open to future law enforcement that we're trying to do at the city, that it would really create a large gap for us.
And then I guess my last question would be, if for some reason, the Supreme Court surprised us all and didn't go down this route and kind of left it the way it is, or kicked the can down the road for another year or two or whatnot, would we, so we can renegotiate this annually? Is that kind of how I understand it?
So, there are two different things that would allow us to reopen and for kind of renegotiation. One is that there will be an annual review that will be the lesser of either a 3% COLA or a cost of living increase, the lesser of that. The other item that would allow for a renegotiation of the compensation associated with it would be if there's a change in the caseload, that looking backwards eighteen months is 15% or more, or the Washington Supreme Court makes a decision that significantly, which again, insignificant is described as 15% or more, impacts the number of cases.
Well, I kind of share the frustration that it's, feels like this is being put on us at a time where we can't really afford it, and like, how, are other cities all going through this, where they're trying to come up with solutions, or some just waiting it out, or...
You know, during this process, I looked at multiple contracts that other cities have with public defense firms and have, you know, kind of done the weighing back and forth on, well, if we need to, you know, if this year, we were thinking that we would have two public defenders and a legal assistant, plus you have to provide these other resources, you know, if the Supreme Court rules go into effect, that petition could potentially be additional staffing on top of that, that this helps to encapsulate some of our risk, but it's not inexpensive.
Well, thank you for the work that you're doing, because with a target that is not even defined, I can only imagine it must be difficult to try to find a solution for a problem that you really, we really don't know what it is yet.
I also wanted to mention, and I know that you joined when the mayor and I went and talked with our legislators, but indigenous defense costs was certainly something that we talked about. There was some, you know, some talk about the state taking more responsibility for the county costs associated with public defense, but that was quickly dropped. In turn, what they ended up doing is adding some additional grant funding that the cities could apply for that could help offset the costs, but it really, I mean, it's just a bucket, a drop in the bucket.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Ms. Hue, can you refresh my memory about the interlocal agreement, what the cost, do we know what the cost would be had we continued with that versus doing this on our own? What the difference would be?
Yes, I had an opportunity to work with the other cities and review the four different applications that they received. There were some that were far more expensive than this, you know, when you look at the average caseload, and some that were similar to this. So, this did not seem out of whack, you know, with the other qualifications, responses that we had to the RFQ.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, to the points that are being made by my fellow council members, as well as the point of explaining why we're here in this place that we are, you know, it's almost like a bitter pill. You know, you have to take your medicine, because right now, where we are financially as cities and across the country are facing similar challenges, you know, economically less resources and needing to tighten up the bootstraps. But, you know, tightening up the bootstraps doesn't mean that the prices are going to go down with it, and I just think that this is where we are. And I'm not aware of any other options that are better for us than this one. And, you know, so I just think we have to go forward and hope for the best, but also keep doing the due diligence to make sure that we're getting as much as we can with what we have at the cost of the time that we are having to pay for it. So, you know, unless there's any other questions about that, Amanda... Yeah?
Ms. Hubick?
Thank you. In the contract, there's an Exhibit C that talks about a monthly report, and then also in the contract, it talks about a quarterly report. Is that something that is presentable to council, that we could look over, that we could kind of stay on top of? How do you expect that information to be shared back to the rest of the crew up here?
It's certainly something that I can share. It's going to be in a very, it'll be the same format that this Exhibit C is, it'll give us just a standing, I mean, the reason I wanted that is because I wanted to have a standing sense of what type of work they actually are accomplishing on our behalf.
Follow-up question?
Yes.
Is it also going to be compared to any sort of year-over-year or monthly trend to where we can have a look back and see if cases are actually continuing to increase like we expect them to?
I think that we will certainly build that. I do know that the Exhibit D, the certification of compliance, is something that our current public defender, even as an in-house public defender, has been providing, so I can go back and, you know, get that. And I can certainly ask that before we close things out, that I have reports from our Office of Public Defense now that would, you know, give me a good sense of what our numbers were when that was in-house. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that I also plan to come back, assuming that we move forward with the contract tonight, but I also plan to come back with some updates to the municipal code that specifically talk about having in-house public defense. And so, that will be something forthcoming as well.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Would it, thank you, would it have made sense to do this for one year instead of three, so we have a better picture of what's happening as we go?
I'm not uncomfortable with three years, given the way that we've negotiated it, that there's some opportunities for discussions as we're going. I can't speak for the law firm about whether or not they would be willing to accept that or consider that as an option, because they're making some business decisions based on this as well.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
We started down the path of contracting for public defense, I think because A, our full-time employee was leaving, but also because we were considering and hoping that we would get economies of scale by working with other jurisdictions. Here, we won't be getting economies of scale. Whether that would have yielded a lower amount, I don't know. But the $300,000, $285,000 annually, I think I would be comfortable with if we were programming that. that amount, which is more or less consistent, as Ms. Schu pointed out, with our budgeted amount for this year, to cover our caseload and the caseload limit adjustments that we think, but don't know for sure, are coming from the Supreme Court. But this doesn't cover that because when those caseload limits get announced, then we will have to renegotiate. And, I mean, if they look like what we think they look like, maybe the cost will double here? I mean, the limits will be caught in half? I don't, I guess I feel less certain that this is the path that we should be taking. We started down this path for a certain, under a certain set of facts, but now that some things have changed, should we be looking at an alternative which is hiring somebody else in-house? Well, that's a rhetorical question. I mean, for the purpose of discussion here, is that, is that a better, is that a better course? I am not troubled by the three-year term of this contract. We have multiple opportunities for renegotiation and termination for public convenience, so we're not necessarily even bound to the three years. But if we, if we get into a situation where it's going to be double, I think we need to not just say, okay, we'll renegotiate and offer them a double price. I think we need to talk about alternatives because, as the mayor points out, the real consequence is not being able to prosecute cases, and that's not acceptable. So it seems, based on timing and availability of our pinch hitter, public defender, we may be boxed into doing this contract. Let me ask you this, what do we know about the firm? We did a RFP process or an RFQ process. Do we have details about this firm and how many attorneys do they have, where are they located, et cetera?
Yes, this is a law firm that is based in Island County. They currently have two full-time employees, attorneys, and one legal assistant. They are providing and are under contract with the City of Oak Harbor for these same services. And the, one of the attorneys actually worked for the former contracted attorney that had public defense services for, did I say Island County? I meant Oak Harbor, for the City of Oak Harbor. So they're familiar with working in a municipal court. They are very much rooted in this area in terms of Anacortes and Wacom, excuse me, and Island County, and feel comfortable with the clientele that we have here. They have secured an office space in Anacortes and are ready to begin the work if we approve this contract, if you approve this contract.
Do I misunderstand anything about the structure of the contract? Are they anticipating continuing on this amount of money if there is some change in the caseload limit?
There would have to be more than a 15% change in the caseload limit, excuse me, in the caseload, looking back over the 18 months for there to be a change. So that's what it is determined to be like, a substantive change in the caseload. And that's the same thing that would apply with the Washington State Supreme Court, that if they were to come up with a very modest change that was not more than 15%, then it would not automatically trigger a reopening.
The way I read it, the 15% applies to the caseload but not the caseload limit change. But regardless, if the caseload limit is changed, it'll be changed by some number and we should be able to analyze that for the purpose of renegotiation.
And I think because in that section 5A, it identifies the definition of what significant is, and then that same terminology is then used in B.
Oh, and that applies to both paragraphs?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way that I interpreted it.
Okay.
Well, you know, for me, unless there's any further discussion, I'll put it out there. I move that the city authorize the mayor to sign Contract 125-148-DEF-001 with Periscope Legal in the amount of $855,000 to perform the public defense services 2025 to 2028.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract as presented. Additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
In addition to that revenue conversation, I think that this type of thing, not this exclusively, but, you know, where we can foresee a potentially significant potential doubling expense, especially hitting the general revenue budget, is something that should be the topic of our retreat. We've got to have those longer-term conversations about these expenses, and this one is a, potentially very substantial.
I agree with you on that, and I hope that you, I hope the council's aware that we've been having this conversation for over a year because we sense the magnitude of the impact.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Francie, I can take the vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And once again, I'd like to thank Mr. Jones for pinching in to help us out here. With that, no further business for the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting.